We have Counselor Benjamin, Counselor Bednarz, Counselor Lewis, Counselor Bennett, Counselor Anderson, and Counselor McCoy with us. And I believe that Counselor Diana Dickey will be joining us later in the council meeting. And at this point, we're going to turn it over to Peter Fernandez, Department Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Apologize for my voice being a little strained. I've been coughing for a week and a half, but I believe I'm on the mend. I'm delighted to just introduce the work session. This is the result of almost two years of work by the staff and a Citizens Advisory Committee to bring to you a revision of Chapter 86. Council will recall that we had a tremendous controversy about the cutting down of the trees over there on State Street. And as a result of that controversy, what became obvious was that Chapter 86, which relates to trees on city properties, to street trees, not private trees. And I'll emphasize that. I'm sure Patricia will emphasize it several times. These are not about privately owned trees. These are just city-owned trees. That chapter, if you look at it today, is about a half a page long. So it really doesn't provide the council, the community, or the staff with a lot to hang its hat on when we need to make decisions about when trees either need to be planted or removed. And when controversy arises, then it really showed just how much work that that chapter needed. Counselor Bennett brought forward a council, a council motion to refer the chapter to staff so that we could provide improvements. Patricia Farrell and Jan Stachewski have done a great job of putting this together, working through a tremendous number of issues. Patricia's going to do the presentation. And as, after she goes through it, then our hope is that, my hope is that I won't have to say anything else the rest of the night because you can hear how I'm doing. But Patricia can answer questions. And our hope is that you can have discussion among yourselves so that we can take it, take this product out to the public in anticipation of the public hearing in April. Last meeting in April?
That's tentative, yes.
Tentatively scheduled for the last meeting in, in the public hearing so that we can proceed with adoption of the new and improved Chapter 86. So without further ado, Patricia Farrell.
Thank you very much. Good evening, counselors and Mayor Peterson. Patricia Farrell, Natural Resource Specialist in Public Works Department. As Peter said, we've been working on this revision for a couple of years now. Hard to believe, but it just takes that long sometimes. So as Peter mentioned, the reason that we started this revision was because there was some controversy about some tree removal in downtown. And so the idea was to revise it, to make sure that we have clear criteria specifically for tree removal, that the code is consistent and clear and concise and kind of matches other city codes. And also to provide a clear process for decisions, applications, and appeals while making sure that these don't necessarily come before council, before a council action. As Peter mentioned, the code is longer now than the existing code. We ended up doing quite a bit of revamping, keeping a lot of the same stuff that's in the code, but moving some things into administrative rules and then further elaborating on some sections to provide that clarity. So as Peter said, Chapter 86 is specifically for city trees. And city trees are defined as those that are on city-owned property. So it's generally street rights of way, parks, and then other miscellaneous properties like City Hall and fire stations. So it does not apply to private property at all, except unless it's affecting city trees. Typical with other codes, it lays out what are the prohibited actions, activities that require permits, variances, removal criteria, appeals, and then the typical kind of enforcement violation sections typical to most of the other codes. One of the first things we did, beginning in October of 2013, was to form a Citizens Advisory Committee. And this shows the members that were represented on that committee. A couple of them are here tonight, including Counselor Lewis was on it. So we tried to get a broad representation from different groups to be on the, on the committee. And we worked for several months to review the code and come up with some proposed languages that we then took internal, for internal review and legal review. So this just shows some of the, the main highlights of the proposed changes. As I mentioned, criteria for tree removal was one of the main things that we wanted to emphasize. So we have a section now in the code that lays out the criteria for removal. We also elaborated more on process for notification, appeals, and variances. The current code does not have any variance process, and it's, it's pretty slight on any kind of notification process, too. We felt like this would help to relieve some of the, the concerns that the public had about how decisions and notifications are made. And along with that, one of the main changes is forming, proposing an urban tree commission. So this would formalize the existing shade tree advisory committee, which is just advisory. And we modeled this new commission on the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission. So it's similar to that in that we use their notification process and posting as an example for what we could do for trees. With the new commission, we were proposing that we would increase the membership from six to seven members, and I'll go into that a little bit more. And we also kind of defined the representation for who we thought should be on the commission so that it provided a broad representation. We also wanted to give the commission authority to make some decisions, rather than just being advisory, that they could actually make a decision on tree removal appeals that came back to them, any referrals from the director. They can make recommendations for heritage tree nominations, which the shade tree advisory committee does now. And also, they could make decisions on variances for undue hardship. So the tree commission would have seven members, as I said, and this would be the layout that we're proposing. We would have two members from the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one from somebody representing urban forestry, arboriculture, or horticulture, one member from downtown Central or downtown Historic District, and then three members who would be basically at-large, who have residence or own property. So the current code, this kind of compares the existing code and the proposed code as far as the notification and appeal process, just to try to clarify it a little bit. So in bold and in the circle here, you can see that with the proposed urban tree commission, that appeals that normally would go to the shade tree advisory would now go to them, that the final decision might be made by them as far as tree removals, and that citizen involvement would go before the tree commission. Those, those removals would be posted in advance so that people would have a chance to comment, and that would also clarify who has standing then to appeal. So the proposal is that if a tree is to be removed, that it would be posted in advance. There would be a posted comment period. Anybody who, the applicant, the neighborhood association, and any person who comments in that timeframe would then have standing to appeal. And this is just a summary of the chronology that to date, we started in May 2013 with the council motion to revise the code. We had the tree advisory committee meetings. At the same time, we have been also working concurrently on administrative rules and design standards. It's gone through initial legal review and also review by Public Works and Community Development. And we are here at March 9th for council work session. So we're hoping that we can move this forward out to the public in the near future. And now I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions or comments from the counselors? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. First of all, I want to say I like the variance. I looked at the variance statute, and, you know, there's always the reasonable person standard, and that's always hard to judge, but that's the legal definition of what you have to do. So I like the variance, and I like the mitigation part of the, of the variance. If you're going to grant it, you can impose conditions.
You can use your microphone.
That's why Anderson could use your microphone. I like the variance. The rest was just surplisage. I like the variance. Then I have a question. You know, I note the difference between a committee and a commission and, and the city rules and ordinances and my view of things, and I think the view of things, that a commission has higher standing, such as the traffic commission, such as the planning commission, plus is the Historic Landmarks Commission. So my question is, is there ever a situation where an appeal can be taken to the council as opposed to the hearing officer? As I read the statute, okay, now I see, the appeal to the variance is only to the hearings officer? What is the appeal from the, from the uniform tree commission?
The, the appeal, so the way a typical one would work is someone comes in for a tree removal permit. The urban forester makes a recommendation to the Public Works Director. The Public Works Director makes a decision. The appeal would go to the urban tree commission, and that would be the final, there wouldn't be a final.
No appeal from the urban tree commission?
No, that would be the final.
And what was the thinking on that?
The thinking was that, that they get an appeal process that goes in front of a broad stakeholder group, and that instead of having it go to them and then to the hearings, or to the hearings officer, that they were kind of getting three chances to, to make their case.
So one chance is to the director, two chances to the UTC?
One, one to the urban forester, one to the director, and then goes to the urban tree commission.
Okay. So under that scenario, any comments by the counselor would have to be on the record to the urban forester, or on the record to the director, or on the record to the UTC?
Yes.
Okay. I have another question or two. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at the, the composition of the committee, and I'm particularly looking at the, yeah, thank you, downtown Central Business District or downtown Historic District? Is that pretty much the same thing? I mean, the Historic District is probably a little narrower than the, than the Business District?
Yes, they're, they're, I think they overlap. I brought my little handy.
Well, I would assume that the Historic District is inside the Central Business District, but I may be wrong.
Yes, exactly. So the Historic District is a, is a smaller area, and I have this graphic if you'd like to look at that. But the green area basically is the Historic District and the Central Business District.
So that's maybe forty percent of the downtown district, just by my looking at it. If you count the little squares there, I bet you'd come up to that percentage. My, my question and comment is, there are a lot of historic districts in the city of Salem, other than the downtown Historic District. A lot of those have trees on the city-owned parkways in front of many houses, including in front of many historic houses. And a lot of those trees may not be historic trees as designated by the city, but the history surrounding those trees is part and parcel of the Historic District itself. So I'm wondering why we don't say that one member should be from the downtown central business or any Historic District? Was that considered?
I believe we did talk about that, and we focused on the downtown central business and the Historic District.
Because that's where the.
Because that's where the controversies have been.
That's where it was, yeah, yeah.
And also, in the previous code, that was kind of a special section in the old code. So we, we kept that, we did add a Historic section in the code, but it, it only refers to trees that are considered to be historic contributing objects.
Yeah, themselves, yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I don't need an answer from you right now, but at some point, if staff could, I'd like some more reasoning on why the larger overall Historic Districts aren't included because there's trees in those, and that's part of what contributes to the historic character of the, of the district. And I can see potentially things happening to street, to trees that are in those districts, even though theoretically, nobody's supposed to do anything because they're city trees and not the trees of the residents who live in front of them. That's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
All right. Other comments or questions? Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselor McCoy.
Could you talk just a little bit about the objective standards that would be used in decision ma, I mean, are these the kinds of standards that we have for the planning commission or other commissions, sort of?
Do you mean for tree removal? Those standards?
Yeah.
Yes. I happen to have a slide of that, a little bit hard to read. A lot of these are already in the existing code as far as reasons for tree removal. So basically, you know, the tree is dead, diseased, dying, infested, it's planted too close, and it's having an adverse effect on neighboring trees. And then other criteria are that there's construction, that there's no alternative, reasonable alternative available to avoid removing the tree. And then also, if there's obviously an effect on adjacent infrastructure that can't be remedied through some other methods, such as pruning or root pruning.
So, okay. So we have a decision. The tree is dead or in an advanced state of decline, and it goes to the urban tree commission? Am I saying that right?
You're saying that right.
Okay. For, on appeal.
Okay.
So the findings then by the urban tree commission would be objective when saying the tree is dead, is finding number one, or the tree is in an advanced state of decline, or any of these others would be the reasoning they would have to use.
Right. Right. I mean, they would have to also look at alternatives. And some of these things where it's construction, you know, the question would be, did you look at alternatives? And what, what were those that you looked at?
But, but on the condition of the tree is dead or in an advanced state of decline, those are, tree is dead is pretty absolute. Tree is in an advanced state of decline might be, would that be debatable? Is that an objective thing? Do you know?
Well, so we have on staff an urban, a couple of urban foresters. I suppose anything is debatable if you really want to take it that far. But they would probably need to have.
Let's assume people will take it that far.
So then they would need to have somebody, a qualified professional, you know, put their name on some sort of document saying, okay, we don't agree that it's in an advanced state of decline, and that you could actually do X, Y, or Z to, to remedy the situation.
Do we, is there then in the, in the code, a description of the kind of bona fides we would require, or, you know, like an engineer's stamp, only in this case, it's an arborist, a trained or licensed arborist stamp that would deal with some of these, particularly in the cases where trees are in decline, structurally unsound, infected, infested, spacing? Those are, those are expert values, or expert, I would assume, there's some sort of objective statement. Who can make that statement?
So as part of this, we have administrative rules that are being developed, and also we will have a new permit application. And so on, in those documents, we will say, these are the things that you need to submit as part of your application for a tree removal.
But, but is there some expertise required of people?
Yes, and so, and we also have there, you know, a certified arborist report may be required. We have, always have that option to make sure that we have that covered.
So if this goes to appeal, we would expect this to be a debate between certified arborists before it's over?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
I believe it's Counselor McCoy, followed by Counselor Bednarz, and then Counselor Lewis.
Get the microphone between all the food here. Question, again, so the definition of a city tree, and that would include then, to make sure I understand, I mean, I get if it's in parks, I get if it's in right of ways and that kind of thing. So between the curb and the sidewalk, on the planting strip or whatever you call it, is that a city tree?
Generally, yes.
Generally, that. What, okay. Generally, less means?
Well, sometimes, I mean, it might be ODOT for some of the roads. Are there other situations? I think generally, those are considered city trees if it's between the curb and the sidewalk, in the planting strip.
Okay. And so, to make sure I understand, if a tree gets sick, if something's happened to it, it's not feeling, they've got to, they've got to go, they, the owner of the home, whose house it's in front of, has to fill out, has to fill out the application to get it taken care of and apply to the city, and they have to come out and check it to make sure?
If it's, if it's diseased, or it's, you know, in severe decline, they would generally just call up the urban forester. The urban forester would go out and take a look at it. If it's dead, diseased, dying, one of those things, then we, as a city, would probably just take that tree out at no cost to them. Now, if they wanted to remove it for some other reason, then that would be a permit process.
So, and then, one more question. If, when, then it has to be replaced according to the?
That's the, that's the desire, is to have the tree replaced if it meets all the other criteria for spacing and, you know, site distance and all those other things.
And is that the city's expense or the homeowner's expense?
The city's.
Okay. And I have one other question, and it's just, I'm just curious a little bit. And it has to do with, second here, who can appeal? If I can find it. It's got, you know, now, right now, standing to appeal is the applicant or affected person. And the proposed code is the applicant, NA.
Neighborhood Association.
Neighborhood Association, or any person who commented. So we could have a citizen, it could be an issue in South Salem, and it's, somebody that came from North Salem and commented could then appeal whatever the decision is if they didn't like it. That seems to me sort of spreading the net a little bit and asking for issues for, for somebody that, I, I just don't understand why it's that wide open, or why it needs to be that wide open, I guess.
Dan, looks like he wants to say something.
If I can respond to that. The, the, the current code, basically, I use, as you noted, talked about affected person. It's kind of hard to determine who an affected person is if you, if you use the analog of like land use laws. Just about everyone's an affected person. So just to make it clear, to make it more clear who can appeal and who can't, because that's been an issue in the past, we just wanted to state that anyone who submits comments has standing to appeal. If council wants to restrict that, you're welcome to.
I think it was also partly in response to downtown because of the down, you know, people, people who live elsewhere in other neighborhoods come downtown, and do they have a right to appeal or comment on removal downtown?
So I, I guess I understand that. I guess my concern is, we're so focused on downtown, we got to make sure that all the other neighborhoods in the city aren't getting affected by a focus on downtown. Though I get that, what that would mean when it's more of a central marketplace, meeting place kind of place for everybody in the, in the city, it's still, with this, anybody who commented, it, you're opening the whole city to somebody who's got a, you know, who's hot buttons trees and doesn't want any, to see anything left. I, I just think it's sort of wide open. It's something we need to look at.
If, if, Mayor, if I may, Counselor McCoy, I completely understand the, your concern. Recall that Patricia was talking about how we had modeled this based on the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission process. So for example, there's going to be a parking change, you know, which is a lot of what CATS deals with. We will post the parking space, says, for a week, says, hey, this is a proposed change, and the change is from this to this, and if you want to comment, here's your opportunity to comment. We do similar things with trees. We post the tree, if the tree's going to be removed. So the chances of somebody from North Salem commenting on something from South Salem really would only be if they drive by or they happen to go through that neighborhood a lot so that they would see the posting. You know, it wouldn't be a notice where we're mailing it or advertising it. It's a posting, it's a site-specific posting. So I, I understand the concern, and as the city attorney said, the council could certainly change it. Our sense is that on ninety-nine percent of these things, the people that are going to comment are the people that live or work right around that tree and not people from, there could be the rare case, but the vast majority of them will be people that are just right there, right near that tree.
And I agree with you, but I guess the one percent was the deal downtown with the streets, with the.
That's true.
Trees on the city. So it can occur, and, and if we're drafting this stuff, we ought to try to.
That's true.
Consider all, all the issues before we get it out there, and not say, hey, you know, the odds of it happening are slim and none, and.
Yeah. I just want to tell you what the thinking was, and it's really based on the, on the CATS process.
Okay. Counselor Bednarz?
Since we're on the subject, I want to continue on with that a little, just a little bit. That really wasn't my question as much, but the community seems to be well-connected at this point. At least the areas that I see and those who love trees have a real connection to one another. And I would be concerned that, that any tree would be up to discussion for the whole city to talk about. It wouldn't take anything just by somebody just happening to go by the tree and to know that there's going to be happening trees that are going to be cut. A classic example of this is D Street next to North Campus. So citywide conversation going on about that issue up to this point. So that will, next, takes me to my next thing that I will look at, and that's the appeal process. If you could go back to, you had the previous slide that you had it on.
The tree removal criteria, or?
Yeah, not that, that one there. So if I understand, let's just, since I'm faintly familiar with the trees on the corner of State and Commercial Street that came out, the one item, item number nine that I see is probably the direction that it would have gone to, that the administrator would have made it up because of the adverse effects on a joint, adjacent infrastructure, would be my guess. If somebody so decides to appeal it at that point, it goes to the, the urban tree commission. And just for the sake of conversation, if the urban tree commission says, you know, we don't think that it's that problem, we don't want to remove the tree, so the tree stays, and, or would have stayed there on the corner of State and Commercial. One of the comments that was made at the time was liability because of, they were improper, they're the wrong type of tree for the, for the area because it dropped a certain amount of material onto the ground. If it, if the trees had been appealed, the appeal had been denied, the trees stay, who would take the liability for, for the droppings of those trees onto the ground?
Well, the city is responsible for the infrastructure adjacent to city trees. So as far as the leaves, if you're referring to the leaves, I'm assuming that, that the property owner is responsible for the leaves, unless downtown, oh, Dan's waving his hand to him.
So Counselors, I understand the question, who's responsible for objects that fall off city trees?
The city. So in this case, if we, we've had trees, those trees that are on corner of State and, and Commercial dropped a material apparently that was rather slick when you walked on it. That's what I understood. And the bank was worried about liability, that they would be sued if somebody slipped on that material that's in, in front of their building, even though they don't own the sidewalk and they don't own the trees. And, and the instance that I'm trying to talk about is, is that if the urban tree commission had denied the removal of the trees for whatever reason that they felt justified, that's the end of the appeal process. US Bank then comes along. Would not US Bank be liable if somebody got hurt?
The, US Bank is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their building.
But not the material on the sidewalk or the trees?
They're responsible for the material on the sidewalk. So you could have, you could potentially, there could be a co-defendants, the, the bank for the condition of the sidewalk, and, and the city for trespassing or dropping items onto the, onto the sidewalk.
Oh, I can see this one. I mean, you clean it in the morning, and it drops by the afternoon.
Every property owner has a responsibility to maintain the sidewalk in front of their property.
Okay. Well, my, my whole point was, they wanted the trees out because it was a liability to them. They wanted to get them out. If the process had not allowed the tree removal, as it possibly could be in here, because it is a decision of a group, the urban tree commission, then they're done. There's no other place for that, for the bank to appeal to on, in reference to removal of the trees. That bothers me a little bit, I guess is where I'm coming to with this whole thing. I was thinking of the same example on D Street again, where we have some beautiful trees that are abutting D Street on the North Campus, preventing the, the widening of D Street when we get started on development of some sort on that property, where those trees belong to the city, as I understand it. Some individual potentially could come into the urban tree commission, make their case. The commission decides, makes a, renders a decision, and it's done. Those trees stay, period. It's over with. And the city then therefore cannot widen D Street.
So, so my understanding is those trees that you're referring, referring to on D Street are actually private trees? They're not in the right of way?
I was, I read in the newspaper that they were in the, in the right of way. I'm talking about the ones on the south side of, of D Street.
Yeah.
None of those that are but the Salem Hospital are on.
No, this is a state hospital.
Correct.
Okay.
Yon, could you come to the microphone?
No, looking at our tax records, tax maps, and then also conversing with the person in the state that was dealing with those, he went to the state surveyor's office, and they concluded that all those trees surrounding the property are on state property.
Okay. That's news to me. Thank you for clearing it up. That really is the end of my question, but it raises some concern, along with Counselor McCoy.
Counselor Lewis?
Patricia, my question's on your outreach efforts. Can you be a little more specific and talk about who you're planning on seeing and over what time period?
Yes. So far, we have scheduled a meeting with the Can Do Neighborhood Association, with the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and with Salem Realtors, are the only ones that we have on, on the schedule right now. Maybe City Watch, I think, asked for a presentation. We were kind of waiting for this work session to get a firmer idea of when this might come in front of council again, before we really go out and start soliciting presentations. But in that, we definitely plan to talk to the Home Builders Association and any other neighborhood associations, possibly Glenn Gibson Watershed Council or other groups like that.
Any thoughts of talking to the downtown businesses?
Oh, yes, definitely. Yeah.
This was an issue with.
Thank you.
I have some questions and comments. I wasn't, I couldn't hear well what you said about the outreach. You will go to that list and others after this has been finalized by city council?
Well, after the meeting.
And after feedback from tonight, and whatever you bring back, and we look at it again, and then you take to the point where you're going to start taking it out to the public. Not before this council has, has become comfortable with the draft, I hope.
Right. So, I guess we're looking for some direction from your comments tonight, if we need to make additional changes, before we go out.
Yeah. I would like to be more specific than that. Maybe Peter has something he's going to say about this.
Well, our plan, Mayor, would be that if council was, you know, we want to show the council what we had here. Clearly, there are some, some concerns about some pieces of it. I know you're going to express some concerns about some pieces of it. So, we will need direction one way or the other. Our plan had been, after this work session, to go ahead and go out to the citizenry, so that they were informed about what's being proposed, so that they can be informed as to what to present, if they want to come to the public hearing. If council wants us to come back in work session to rework something, then we would need to hear that this evening, and perhaps some general consensus or some direction as to what you would like us to tweak, so that we can tweak it and bring it back, and then go out to, go out to the public. So, barring a different direction, our plan would be to start going out to the public after tonight's work session in anticipation of public hearing. So, we would like to hear different, if there's a different, if council desires more work and come back here, we need that direction.
I'm going to, I think you're going to get that correction in just a minute.
That's right. That's right. But we need that direct, we need that specific direction.
Well, we'll see what the rest of my, we'll see what my cohorts think about my comments. So, one of the, I have a couple of questions, and one is just in terms of our expertise within the city now, that we have. I'd like someone to please describe for me the various, I know Patricia Farrell is a natural resources specialist, but could we please be educated as to exactly who in the Public Works Department, Parks Department, have various knowledge and expertise training to deal with our trees, to make informed decisions, and probably are making a lot of those informed decisions every day?
Well, Yon Sheshevsky is our urban forester, and we also have, Yon, maybe you want to talk about, we also have, is Tom Bradley, another urban forester, and we have urban...
So, you have two urban foresters?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't believe that there's, we have one certified arborist, and then we have their staff, which includes seasonal people, but mostly Tom and Yon make the, make the decisions.
Mm-hmm. And then your classification is as a...
Natural resource specialist, so I don't really get involved in making any of the decisions. I just get to work on code.
Lucky you.
But you're knowledgeable. I mean, you've been educated in the science of flora and fauna to some degree.
Yes, yes, but I'm not a certified arborist.
Patricia.
Patricia.
Okay.
Mark Bechtel, Parks and Transportation.
Hello, Mark.
Hi. Our park superintendent, Keith Keever, is a licensed landscape architect, and you're a landscape architect, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay. So, so really, you have four people that are, you know, professional, you know, professionally educated in trees, and then your tree staff, the tree trimmers are also very educated in the day-to-day aspects of trees.
Good. Great. Okay. So, I'm stepping back, and I'm looking from another perspective. Instead of looking at trees, I'm looking at dollars. And I know, since I came here four years ago to this chair, we've been talking about city resources and the struggle that we have every year, and the very necessary constraints that we need to show in the way we develop our activities and our programs within the city, so as to try to minimize expense. And certainly, the biggest expense we have is staffing. And why is that? Why do we have staff? We have staff for exactly these excellent, excellent resources, to have the kind of professional staff, and the people who can guide and make decisions. And I think that's what makes our city strong, because we do have really fine, excellent staff. And so, I'm thinking about the process that will take for a special commission, which will be, and I know as a counselor, how hard it is to recruit people to boards and commissions, and how much time we take just getting the people onto them, and then how much staffing time it takes when the commission meets, and the commission has to be educated and prepared and briefed, and then following the meeting, then there's more work to do following that. And I'm concerned about the amount of staff time that we would be building up into when we establish another commission. And that's, that's going to be what I'm going to say about any commission on anything, because I actually think we need to be reducing, rather than adding, in order to really more carefully manage time. And then the other thing, I'm stepping back and thinking about the process. And as you've described, so much of the decision-making process about the trees, whether they're removed, or trees and shrubs, removed or not removed, really have to, the answers lie in scientific answers. It's dead, it's diseased, it's not going to do well in that location, it's the wrong location for a tree or a shrub, and they, those, to me, seem like decisions that can be made based on fact, and should be made on fact, and made by people with expertise. And I look at our list of what we have in the way of expertise within our own city, and I also look at the expertise that we have in our department directors. And I have tremendous confidence that the staff that we have, the directors that we have, have the ability and the judgment, or they wouldn't be in those positions, they have the ability and the judgment, to make the decisions. And so, I'm questioning the need, not only for another commission, but I'm even questioning the need for the Shade Tree Advisory Committee altogether, because we have this list of wonderful, highly qualified staff. And I think that it's time that we started allowing the professional staff that we have, and right up to the director and the city manager, to do their work, and have confidence that we've hired the right city manager, the city manager hires the right directors, the directors hire the correct people, and the right decisions are going to be made. So, I feel very strongly that it would be helpful if staff could come back on this issue and present to us an alternative of how the process would work within our own staff. Yes, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me, let me just kind of explore, because I think what you're saying is really interesting. I want to, and help me out if I head down the wrong road, I'm sure you will, but when you're dealing with fact in situations like this, this is from the experiences we've had around trees. And I've had two great big healthy sweet gums cut down in front of my house, the house that I own, surprised me, caught me off guard. It was about my first week on the council, and my neighborhood became a place for sidewalk construction. And it took me a while to get over it, until I got rid of those little spiny things that come with sweet gums. I thought it was a brilliant idea, and really thanked the city for their foresight. But there are other situations where facts can compete. We wouldn't, we have a great planning staff. I would not let them ever make the final decision on a land use decision that somehow I couldn't be involved in, or that didn't guarantee there would be a forum for competing fact. So, if the guy next door wants to turn his house into a duplex, and it's, there's a zone change required, there, you know, Glenn and his staff might say, well, that makes perfectly good sense. I might not think it does, and we can't compete with facts. And that's why I wondered on these, on the fact-finding part of it, how that'd be handled. And what I hear is a program that sounds analogous, that I bring my arborist, you bring your arborist, and we have a group that is, that sits in kind of judgment of a fact situation that can go through it, that from what I could see of the selection of the people, are serious people, some with really specific expertise. And I just, I feel comfortable that that's okay. I do understand your staffing issue, and I'd be interested in what the staffing of a commission looks like. But in terms of allowing for differences of opinion with our professional staff, that's, we spend a lot of time sorting that out at times, you know, as our professional staff might have one opinion, neighbors may have another, you know, Public Works may have another. We may have three or four sets of facts coming at us, and part of our job as a council in case of land use is to help sort that out. So, I'm not as nervous about, I would be, what I think we do set up with this is both access and confidence in this, in what has become, and will probably, as these trees age rapidly over the next several years, sticky situations where people see the trees differently. And there are arborists who will say, that tree can be pruned out of this, or that tree can be treated this way, and it allows this commission to at least weigh that if someone wants to appeal. You see what I'm saying? I just think we need to allow for that kind of clash of facts to be adjudicated by a disinterested group of people with some level of expertise that have been briefed in the code that they are using and enforcing, like we do with land use, or we do with other, other kinds of situations like that, where we sit in our kind of quasi-judicial law.
Well, what I see is a tremendous difference between a land use issue, which I certainly agree with you, there, we've got a really good system for adjudicating those decisions. I think there's a tremendous difference between a land use decision on something, it's taking one house and making it into two residences, and a tree, whether it's healthy and the appropriate tree, or not healthy and not appropriate, or dead. Those are scientific answers. And yes, we could have dueling arborists, but do we want to be a community that encourages the public to begin that sort of expensive type of decision-making over things that, that affect people when decisions need to be made? And so, I'm not seeing this as analogous to planning at all. I'm seeing it as analogous to, and I asked Peter Fernandez this one day, if he determined, and his staff determined, that we needed to have a certain type of pipe put in the ground for a certain type of water flow or sewage flow, does he want to be in a situation, should we have a situation where the community could be prescribing to him the kind of pipe that should be in the ground? I don't think so. I think there's a limit to which we need to have community input on everything, and a time when we have experts on our staff who can make decisions. Yes, we could have dueling arborists till the cows come home. There's no doubt about that. I'm sure everybody could find somebody who could speak on their side. But do we want to set up a system that feeds that? I personally don't. I want less live theater on these policy issues and this determination, not more.
I hear what you're saying. I guess, I still, I keep thinking of if it were my house and the city's tree, and they have found a reason to take that tree down, and I have hired someone to take a look at the tree for me, because it adds value to my house, it adds value to my street as I see it. It's aesthetically pleasing, I can, you know, I'm sure there are a whole batch of other values I could put in place. I guess I'd like to have the opportunity to have my arborist look at it, and have someone take a look and see if that tree needs to come down, or could it be fixed? And if I'm wrong, I've, I've put my bucks into my arborist, I just don't see a lot of these going on. But it does, I think it just allows for more confidence, more access. I'm fairly comfortable that it's not going to end up a free-for-all of dueling arborists. I don't know how many there are, but it would, it would seem to me that these are fairly few and far between. But, but, I mean, I certainly respect your point of view. I do. I hear exactly what you're saying.
I think there were some other hands up, and I too am cognizant of the time. Would you help me, whose hand was up next?
Maybe mine.
All right. Counselor Benars, and then McCoyd, and then Anderson.
I'm going to try to turn mine into bullet points, only because that's what you've kind of asked for, if you want to tweak what you've written up so far. First off, for bullet point number one, I really think it should be a director decision, ultimately, not a council decision. I don't know if it should necessarily come before the council at all, in any shape at all, but I certainly see that there's politics in even cutting down trees. I think it should be a committee, not a commission. I think it should be an advisory committee. And I think the process should probably go from the urban forester to the urban tree commission, to the director, and the director makes the final decision in the end. That comes right back to what I was talking about, that it should be a decision of a director, not of the council.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor, let's see, McCoyd, Anderson, and then Lewis.
So, a question, how often does this occur? It just strikes me, I mean, to the mayor's point, is this something that happens once a year, once every five years, ever?
We don't know, because we don't have this.
Well, no, but the other, the old tree code had an appeals process in there. There was an appeals process in the thing.
Yes.
Yon Stachowski, City Forester. Since 2001, till, well, the end of this, 2014, we've had 40 appeals of the decision, or combined with any request from the downtown. Most of the time, it's been a couple per year. There was two years where we had eight, and one year was seven.
Okay, thank you. It's good to have that factual information. Yes?
So, and you mentioned downtown. Were most of those downtown, or were they all of the...
Less than half.
Half?
Okay. Let's see. Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly can appreciate your fiscal arguments, because that's, that's a big concern, and I'm learning that as the deeper I get into this stuff. that as the deeper I get into this stuff. But on balance, I have to come down with Counselor Bennett's view, that I think these kind of issues are important enough to the people involved that they, that I think they need something more than just an administrative decision, as well as, I think, in some way, that takes the pressure off the staff in terms of, if the staff makes the final decision, that's where the blame, if it were, were to lie by the parties. But if it goes to something in the next level up that is composed of citizens as opposed to staff, I think it may be easier to accept that decision. I also have to say, I favor a commission status as proposed over a committee, because it was the advisory committee's recommendations that weren't followed, and the bank thing that really led to the, you know, the uproar that caused this. And it may have been different if we would have gone to the, an urban tree commission with the final decision. I also, actually, I would favor bringing it in front of the council, but I know that that's not going to be the prevailing mood here, and so I'm not even going to push that.
Yeah, that's right.
But I certainly think we should, we should go to the commission.
Okay, Counselor Lewis?
You know, we go around and around, I find myself coming back to where we are. And maybe that's the best place to be for two reasons, actually a combination of reasons. The fiscal aspect is real, and I've learned more about that in the last two months than I care to know. But the community involvement is also real. But we had that before, and my concern is, if it wasn't for the US Bank issue, we probably wouldn't be here. And I have a concern about rules or laws or ordinances that come about quickly after experiences that upset people greatly. They generally are not good rules. They're out of emotion. And again, if that situation had not happened, we probably wouldn't be here. So in my mind, probably the best place to be would be back where we were, and to not entertain this at all.
Okay. It sounds to me like we've given you a list of suggested things that we'd like to see back, and so to summarize, if anyone needs to summarize theirs, mine is just, show me an alternative that uses staff-only process.
So, Madam Mayor, might, picking up what you said previously, do you want staff to come back and schedule another work session?
Yes, I do. I do. I do. I think that this is the way to do it, unfortunately, I think so.
And focused on the appeal process. So, what I'm understanding, I guess, I guess we could hear from Counselors.
Unless there are other items that came up today.
Or just via email, that we would come back and just focus on the appeal process, you know, the two or three different, the existing, you know, we heard from Counselor Lewis, and I heard from one other, keep it the same, the staff recommendation, and then a much, a more administrative-driven opportunity.
Counselor Bennett?
Well, I would also then like to have an understanding, a better understanding of how the CATS process works. If that's how you have used it, how often is it used, what are the kinds of things that occur, you know, not, I don't mean exhaustive study, but enough to kind of create an analogy that we can appreciate what we're really asking for here.
Okay.
Great.
And we'll focus on that, and we'll come back here before we start going out to the public, is what we're hearing.
Counselor Anderson?
Just briefly, I'm also interested in the makeup of the commission, and maybe there's nothing more to say on that. Maybe that's a decision the council has to make.
Oh, sure, and it'll be up there, and if there's another, we'll focus in on the appeal process, including the makeup of the commission.
Great.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for all the work on this, absolutely. Okay, we're going to adjourn our work session and get ready for the council meetings.
I'm going to call this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for March 9th to order. If the clerk, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner McCoyd?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Please.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Benards?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
You please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no one signed up for, oh, let's do approval of additions and deletions. Counselor Anderson, could you give me a motion to approve additions and deletions to the agenda?
I'm terrifically thrilled that you asked me. This will be my first motion of that matter, and I move the additions and corrections to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. It's time for public comment. No one has signed up for a public comment to the housing authority, or anyone would like to address the housing authority. All right. Commissioner McCoyd, how about you move the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar? Second.
Second by Benards?
Amazing.
Although, is there any discussion? Mr. Wilson, did you have anything you want to talk about?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I have an opportunity to do that.
Why don't we, why don't we let you go ahead now and do that?
Okay, thank you. Just a couple quick comments, primarily for the newer commissioners. It's not untypical, the first three months of the calendar for the workload for SHA coming to the commission, fairly light, unless there's something extraordinary. What we do have coming up in the months of April, May, and June are, which, where it starts to get a little heavier agenda, is the public housing, annual public housing plan that the agency puts together, that the commission will, commissioners will be looking at, as well as various annual administrative functions. HUD will publish certain income levels, for instance, and we'll have to make changes to our plans and other administrative plans. And then, of course, SHA has a whole series of audits, financial audits for the agency and other audits for other properties. So there will be additional volume coming to you, I just wanted to point that out. In the program management report, the community connection section about No Hungry Child program, that's not a name we made up, but that is the name of the program. SHA has been involved with Marion Polk Food Share for over 15 years since the inception, and we not only work with Marion Polk on this sort of activity, but we have community gardens at all of our properties that are seeded, literally and figuratively, by Marion Polk Food Share. What I wanted to note was the demographics of the three properties that are sites for children to come and eat a meal during spring break. That's what the program is. About 59% of all the families that live at these three sites, a public housing site and two affordable housing sites, are extremely low-income housing households, rather. For a family of four, that's going to be about $23,050. So I just wanted to provide some context for the economics of the clients that we're serving and the children that, when they're not in school, have a limited ability to access food. And just to tie that into the broader contract, context of SHA, the 8,810 total current clients we serve, so 8,800, the weighted, I want to say that, the weighted average of their income is 13,365. Now, keep in mind that we have a lot of seniors, fixed income, single household, however, that's the, that is the average income that our children, or our households earn, and of that 8,810 total residents, 46% are children 18 and younger.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, a couple questions. For this specific spring break lunch program?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a, is there a budget?
Uh, the.
Or is it making out?
Marion Polk Food Share provides, provides the funds, or the food. And what we do is we allow our sites to be regional sites for not only the people living on those sites, but other people in the community who have children that are out on spring break could come to our sites and be fed during that week.
So the city doesn't provide?
No, sir.
Just the physical locations?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other thing, I couldn't help but admit, the very top with 60.7% of the Salem Kaiser School District students on the free and reduced lunch program, that's just a number of the year. Do you know anything about that? Is it really 60.7% of the Salem Kaiser School students are eligible for the lunch program?
I can only attest to our direct clientele, but that is a number that Salem Kaiser Schools have given us and used for the, their demographics, which they report federally and state, to the state as well. So yes, I would believe that's accurate.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much. I just want to say that I appreciate all the work the city does on this, and if it were to cost us some money, I think we should find some way to do that, and I think this is an extremely vital thing, especially when you look at the statistics, it's, you know, it's visible that this can happen, and the city is ours, and the country is ours, and we should be doing, as the city staff, everything, and the city council, everything we can do to address this situation. And I appreciate the efforts that the housing authority is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the, to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have no further business before the housing authority, the housing authority adjourns.
March 9th, 2015. With the recorder, please call the roll.
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Here.
Board Member Dinkie? Board Member McCoyd?
Present.
Board Member Dickey? Board Member Benjamin?
Here.
Board Member Benards?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here, thank you. We have a motion for the approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Member Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benards to approve the approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I don't believe we have reports of boards, commissions, or committees. Is there anyone signed up for public comment? Yes, thank you. Todd, and I apologize, I can't read your last name, so maybe you will know that you signed up, and you can help me with your last name. It's, I'm not even going to try to guess, okay? And followed by Scott Miller.
Silbernagle.
I'm sorry?
Silbernagle.
Silvernagle?
Silbernagle.
Silvernagle, thank you.
You're not from Stateon, are you, Madam Mayor?
My father is, yes.
You have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and then at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Okay. Well, again, my name's Todd Silbernagle. I oversee the real estate development team for Goodwill Industries of the Columbia Willamette. There is an agenda item 3.3D, I believe, later, that you will be reviewing, and I just wanted to take a minute or two to speak to that.
Excuse me, sir. I think you wanted to speak on the city council agenda. This is the Urban Renewal Agency. We can move you over to that agenda.
Well, he's on this, oh, I see, okay. We'll just move him over, okay.
Okay, my apologies.
That's okay. Thank you, I'll catch that right away. Scott Miller, would that also perhaps apply to Mr. Miller? No, all right, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Scott Miller with Marquee Companies, 4560 Southeast International Way, Milwaukee, Oregon. And I just want to thank the city staff and the council for working with us on this development agreement and the grant program in general. This is a necessary component for us to move forward with our project, and so we're really excited to be here to be addressing this and to get started in earnest once this is done. So I have no other comments, really. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer some.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counselors? All right. Thank you for being here, appreciate that. All right, was there anyone else who did want to make comment during the Urban Renewal Agency comment period time? All right. Then I would like, I would entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Member Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with following poll, 4.3A, by Counselor Anderson.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benars to approve the consent calendar with the one poll of item 4.3A by Member Anderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could, we had a scripter error on the minutes for February 9th, and that's been corrected. It said a binding agreement to real pay property taxes instead of pay real property taxes, and that was under 4.3B on that agenda item.
Right, thank you. There are two information reports in this evening's agenda, so I direct your attention to those. Were there any questions regarding those? All right, we'll move to special orders of business, which is where we will take up the item 4.3A. Member Anderson, do you have a motion?
To get the discussion going, I will move adoption of item 4.3A.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Benars to remove, to approve the act, the recommended action. And discussion?
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions for staff, and I don't know who would be, ah, Mr. Scott. First of all, some questions about the facts and findings. I'm looking at the first paragraph of the facts and finding on page two, talking about the commitment letter from a lending institution and the fact that they don't have one now, but that does, as I understand what you're saying, that doesn't make any difference. We could move ahead with this because it's not going to happen unless they get a commitment letter from a lending institution.
Rick Scott, interim urban development director. Counselor Anderson, I believe that is the case, so it's a cart and horse issue that we're dealing with here, and I think what you see reflected in this report is in fact accurate.
I would actually say it's a chicken or the egg question, because you know that the cart should not go be horse, but you don't know which came first, the chicken or the egg. Then I have a second question, and it relates to what you say on the third page is the key id- page is the key items of development agreement. I'm specifically looking at the prevailing wage determination issue, and then I've seen a letter someplace that says they, uh, the developer has obtained a prevailing weight, uh, wage letter or approval. And my question relates to the 744, 704, 704, you know what I'm talking about. The $1 less than 3/4 of a million grant is, is the 750,000, is that the, um, the, the point where prevailing wage laws kick in? Is that the reason it went to less than that?
Counselor, I think you said the magic word, where the prevailing wage law kicks in. And so I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney-
Sure.
-to address that question.
Sure, sure. Counselor Anderson, council, the bottom of page two of the staff report talks about the prevailing wage issue. To date, I do not believe the applicant has obtained a predetermination letter from Bowley. That'll be a requirement before their, before the, any money would be granted. Basically, under chapter 279C of the ORS is, if it's, if the grant is under, or if the public money is under $750,000, and they meet certain other requirements, there's a, essentially an exception to prevailing wage requirements, uh, that it wouldn't, the project wouldn't be subject to prevailing wage.
So, um, I presume, and I presume you'll let me know, somebody at the staff, that this is not true, that $750,000 figure might have been arrived at because of prevailing wage issues?
Well, certainly, because if the, if this is going to turn into prevailing wage project, the city could potentially be liable for paling, paying those prevailing wages. Further, it may not make economic sense for them to turn their entire 11, 12 million dollar project into a prevailing wage project if they're only getting $750,000 in public money.
Okay. Then I have a follow-up question. I think this is for interim Director Scott, and that relates to the source of the $750,000 less a dollar or two. From where is that coming? Is that money that is already present, that the city already has? Or how does the city obtain the funds or obtain the equivalent of the funds that they're not going to get of the seven, of the $750,000 grant?
Counselor, the, the grant will be paid in the form of annual payments over what we estimate will be eight to 10 years. The source of the funds is actually the, or the source of the funds for the payment is the increased value and the increased property taxes generated from the development itself. So that improvement will generate a certain additional property tax, and that property tax, that additional property tax, will be used to make the payment.
And following up on that, if, if that improvement, the additional property tax created, let's say it only equals $550,000, would that be the amount of grant, the grant?
If, if they're, they fail to meet the requirements or the, the values, they, they get paid generally what they generate in taxes, so they will continue to get paid. Currently, their, this particular development agreement authorizes or, or has a 10th year anniversary, so that's when it concludes. But they can request an additional 10 years for a total of 20 years for repayment.
And that would be to get up to the $750,000 repayment?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So, in other words, it sounds like that the mon, the money that the city is getting for the grant is actually monies that are generated by the development itself.
That is exactly the way the payment is made.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions? All right. Thank you very much. There is a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Anderson?
Um, I'm going to say that I'm going to vote for this with some reluctance, and the reason I am voting for it is because this is a process that is, has been in, in ongoing for many, many, many years. This particular item is one item out of, you know, a myriad of items that have been discussed, and I know the staff and the prior councils have exercised the highest level of diligence on this. Standing alone, I might have concerns, but because, um, you know, this council is coming into the procedure late, and because this is only one part of a larger big picture, I'll, I'll be voting for the motion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The motion on the floor by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Benars. And I will call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I see no other special orders of business or unfinished business, and we're not having any public hearings tonight for the Urban Renewal Agency. This meeting is adjourned. All right. I'll call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, March 9th. With the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki? Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Dickey? Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Benards?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. I'd like to thank very much Counselor Bennett, who is standing in this evening as our council president. And council president, Brad Nanki, is back east with the National League of Cities, representing City of Salem. So we will proceed, and I will ask Counselor Bennett for a motion regarding approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to approve additions and deletions to the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Time for council and city manager comment. Are there councilors with comments? I see Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Lewis.
Madam Mayor, I wanted to just take a moment to congratulate my constituent Hazel Patton, being named Salem's first citizen. I think we all know Hazel and are really appreciative that she was recognized for the tremendous work she's done in this community. You sort of limit your discussion to the big stuff. The carousel, the footbridge between Wallace Marine Park and Riverfront Park on Union Street, the museum, and really, ultimately, the saving of a, of a large chunk of the historic State Hospital, the J Building out on Center Street. Those are just a few of the things, as well as her longstanding support of our historic districts. She just is one of those gems any community is, is proud to have. It was a wonderful event, I thought. I thought it was really well done. All of those recognized, made you proud to be a resident of Salem. I'm particularly proud of the work done by Hazel Patton.
Excellent. Counselor Anderson?
As I was on my bike today on the way to the work session, I got stopped by a neighbor who wanted to talk about city stuff. And he had just had his tool shed broken into and over $2,000 worth of tools. And I said, "Well, did you report it to the police?" And he said, "I certainly did." And they sent out a CSO, which I presume is Community Service Officer?
That's right.
Um, who named Officer Libby, who he said he had nothing but praise for him. And he also said he took the opportunity to write a letter, I think to the police chief and maybe also to the city manager. But I also want to make this public that this is another example of the good work done by our police department. And, you know, he didn't feel very good about his, all his tools being stolen, but he felt like the police responded in a proper and appropriate manner, and he was very pleased with the service from the police department. So my kudos to Officer Libby, and I hope you could convey that to the police chief and also directly to Officer Libby. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Well, I'm happy to report that after less than two months, I have indisputable evidence, the reward of being on the Salem City Council. As a citizen, Lewis, there's no way I would have been invited to the Harretton Grade School to read for the first grade class on Read Across America Day honoring Dr. Seuss. But as Counselor Lewis, I was invited. And if that was not exciting enough, the first graders, it's neat the way they sit down on the floor and surround the chair you're in. But as you start reading, and my book was How About You by Dr. Seuss, the little munchkins start inching their way towards the chair, and by the time you're done with the book, they surround the chair. So the reward is true. Thank you.
That's great. Yes, Counselor McCoy?
Um, the Association in Run has a program called Pro Start. It's a culinary arts, uh, training program. We've got thirty, uh, three high schools in Salem are in it. And one of the things we do every year is we have a culinary arts competition. This year was at Spirit Mountain, and it's sort of the state tournament for these culinary arts students. And you should see they come and that they've got teams of four. They, they end up cooking a three-course meal, a starter, an entree, and a dessert. They have one hour to do so on two little gas burners. And the, the food they crank out is just, it's amazing, and it's a great, it's a great, a great event. We love doing it. The room's electric, the kids are so excited. And I'm pleased to announce, and the winner, and this is again sponsored by us, the winner gets to go to the national tournament, which this year is in Anaheim at Disneyland. And we pay for the student, the teacher, and their mentor chef to go down there and compete on behalf of Oregon. And this year's winners were South Salem High School. So kept it in the community. They're going down there, and the teacher, Todd Weewick, and his crew did a great job and did the city proud and really, really did an amazing meal that they cooked, so.
It's always good news. Wonderful. Yes, our city manager has a comment.
Yes, I have a couple of things. As probably many people saw in the media, we had the first unveiling of our art sculpture on the street last Friday, and Councilors Bennett and McCoy were able to make it. And it's the cube that is, had previously been at City Hall and then was at the Sculpture Garden at the Convention Center. And it's lit and on one of the street corners, and we hope to have nine before long, and really encourage people to go by and see that. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the Marion Polk Spring Break Lunch Program. This year, it's been coordinated by our previous community development director, Vicki Woods, and I'm going to volunteer over the lunchtime that week at one of the sites. And we are having a site in the library this year as well, so if you have an opportunity to come by and you want to learn more about it, you're welcome to do that.
That's really lovely. That's nice. I have a couple of items to share. One has to do with the Salem surgeon, and I think she's really courageous. Her name is Debbie Eisenhut, and she was among a team of physicians who actually went to the front lines to help deal with the Ebola crisis that had struck. And she then, because of the people that she had been in contact with, did have to spend, I think it was 21 days, in isolation. I'm sure that wasn't easy for her, but she did that. And fortunately, had no signs of Ebola. But I think it's remarkable that people do put themselves out, and they'll make, make their lives uncomfortable and maybe take some risks so that they can help other people. And we should be very proud of our Salem physician, Debbie Eisenhut. I wanted to also mention to you, I received a very nice email from a constituent who said, "This last week, I was walking from my office to a local restaurant to meet a client. I decided to take back alleys for three blocks. Walking up the way, I could not help but notice how clean and green it was, even though winter's not here. Winter is not over. I was walking in a commercial area, but there were many flowers and patches of grass and almost no visible trash. I was reminded that this is a very nice city to live in." He says, "We live in a clean city. It's kept clean by the city employees and by the citizens who are proud to live here." It's a relatively, it's relatively quiet, it's safe, and it's just an all-around nice place to live. And he was sending in his congratulations to city staff and also to the community at large for caring so much about their community. And my last comment is to so many people who were very caring of me after I fell off the horse and did have an injury to my back and my ego. And I want to thank people for cards and letters and flowers and phone calls and food. And if I'd known it was going to be that much fun, I probably would have fallen off the horse maybe earlier. But I'm not planning to get on that horse again, so. Anyway, thank you to staff, who were so lovely, and many people filled in and took meetings for me and, and represented the city out in my stead, and I appreciated that as well. So thank you. Are there any other comments? All right. We will now move to the public comment. And we do have people signed up for that as well. Shall we start with the gentleman who was going to speak? Can I do that? Ask you to come to the podium, and then I'll go back up onto the rest of this list.
Thank you. Again, my name's Todd Silbernagle. I'm with Goodwill Industries of the Columbia Willamette, and I oversee their real estate development team. One of the agenda items coming up, 3.3D, is a petition of a street vacation. I just want to take a moment to, to speak to that briefly. Goodwill is currently under contract on eight tax lots in the southeast corner of West Salem at Edgewater and Wallace Boulevard, excuse me, Wallace Road. And that runs from Edgewater north to the undeveloped Second Street and running about 2/3 of the way from Wallace down towards Murlock Avenue. Our West Salem project will be the keystone to the redevelopment of the entrance of the Edgewater Street corridor. The redevelopment is possible only with the ultimate approval of the First Street Vacation. Vacating First Street will eliminate a small 100-foot block module on the southeast corner of the site. I'm going to also eliminate an unsafe intersection there at First and Wallace Road and, along with impeding traffic queuing. Goodwill will voluntarily develop Second Street, street improvements all the way to Murlock, and that will alleviate some traffic congestion at the site. On December 15th, we met with the West Salem Neighborhood Association and received unanimous support on the project. The development will create close to 100 construction-related jobs, and upon completion, it will create 100, over 100 permanent jobs, both with Goodwill staff and staff of our tenants and the two retail pad buildings. West Salem's been a very giving community for the last 23 years through their donations at the Goodwill site that is existing, and we're looking forward to giving back to the community through our Job Connection Services, our retail services, and the services of the tenants in that beautiful development of the two retail pad buildings. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilors? All right. Thank you so much. And Casia Quillinen, followed by Peter Bale.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. My name is Casia Quillinen. I live at 1145 14th Street Northeast, and I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Salem Parks and Recreation Board, and I'm speaking to item 10.2, which is a resolution which has been introduced this evening by Counselor Bennett for the exploration of a potential acquisition of a portion of the state-owned property on North Campus. That would be along D Street. So I'm here to tell you about that piece of property and why we should have it. So the property consists of already existing approximately six and a half acres, could be seven acres, will have to depend on an exact measurement, but it is already existing ball fields, soccer fields, and has been used by state agencies for years and the neighborhoods around there for years for those purposes. Our Parks and Recreation Board looked at the opportunity to acquire this particular piece of, of land, and we were all present at the last meeting. Nobody was absent, and we voted unanimously. Nobody was absent, and we voted unanimously to recommend to council that you go ahead and start the process of looking into how to acquire that chunk from the state. Now, I do understand that there is some, some interest on the part of the state in talking to council about possibly acquiring, having the city acquire this piece of property. But it will need action from you all to start that process. And that's what we're here asking you to do, is to start the process of looking into acquiring this particular piece of property. Now, the reasons for that, I don't know if you have seen the, the letter that we sent over from the Parks and Rec Board, whether it's included in your packet or not, but amongst other things, the field's already developed. It would require minimal maintenance on the part of the park staff, and we already, we, our inventory of soccer fields and ball fields is at a minimum, and there is no other place to, to put soccer fields and ball fields within the immediate area. And Gear Park, which we developed some, quite some years ago, is, is much too far for neighborhood use of this sort. So, that's what we'd like to talk about. We think it would be an excellent fit with any potential redevelopment that's going to occur on that property, and what I'd really like to talk to you into doing is not just acquiring this maybe 6.4 or 5 acres that's out there, but how about 20 acres? So, that's what I'm here for. I'll answer any questions that is, that you have.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Anderson.
I, I think you basically answered my question in legal terms. That would be called ask and answer, it would be subject to an objection. But my question is, is you're interested in more than that, if it's possible. And so, if, if more would be possible, we would most likely get another letter of recommendation from your committee saying, "Get it all."
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you for listening, and I encourage you to support the resolution.
Thank you. Peter Bale, followed by Marin Nguyen, Marin Nguyen perhaps it is. Peter?
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Thank you very much for the opportunity of talking to you. I live in northeast Salem, and I'm addressing item 10.2, which is the potential acquisition of that land. I actually represent Salem Spardon's Rugby Football Club, and we are a member of the Pacific Northwest Rugby Football Union. And rugby is the fastest-growing team sport in the United States, and the PNAFA, the Pacific Northwest Rugby Football Union, is part of USA Rugby, and so it administers everything. So, we are part of something which is incredibly exciting in the development of the sport. So, currently, we're a three-year team. We've only been going for three years, and we're sitting on top of the South Division, so we're representing Salem across the Pacific Northwest. We anticipate going to the playoffs this year, hopefully winning that, and then going on to the Nationals. We take what we do extremely seriously, and we have a lot of fun doing it. There are approximately 30 adult men in our club plus supporters, and we are heavily associated with a youth team, which it plays within the Rugby Oregon setup, where there are 1,500 young people, men, young boys and girls, and young men and women who actually participate in the sport. And we provide the coaches and a lot of the requirements that these youngsters have for participating in the sport. So, we've been, excuse me, we've been using D Street on and off for the last three years. We tried very hard to get access to practice fields with the city, but unfortunately, it didn't happen for us. We tried every avenue that we could. We went to Wallace Marine, we went to Busch Park, we even actually tried Riverfront Park till we realized that it said, "Please no cleats," and so we went, "Oops, sorry," and moved off. But D Street is really our only place that we can practice, and we need to practice two, three, four times a week to maintain the development that we're making. So, the size of a rugby field is approximately 120 by 70 yards, so it's a little bit bigger than a soccer field. One thing I would like to say is that we understand the enthusiasm for soccer in the city. This is not soccer. I have never seen a soccer player actually out on D Street, nor actually a lacrosse player. We have softball, rugby, there's ultimate frisbee there, and there's some tiny little guys in helmets playing football. And it's a very community feel to what we do there. It's not organized soccer, and we're quite anxious that we don't get, again, "Okay, this is a soccer field, and therefore rugby. I'm sorry, you don't get there." Is it okay if I just finish?
Sorry, yes, can you wrap up?
Okay. So, the one thing that really is key for us is that without D Street, I think we'll fold, and that's very important. We represent the city throughout the Northwest, and hopefully in the nation, and we do our best to do a good job of that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming down, counselors. Are there any questions? Yes. Counselor Benjamin.
I invite you to take a look at Brown Road Park, see if that's someplace that you could maybe practice.
I'm sorry, that was?
Brown Road Park.
Okay. And how would we, who would we talk to?
Well, you can talk to me.
All right.
We'll, we'll have someone here give you their contact.
Yeah, somebody will give you the directions there. You guys can check it out and see what you think. And then I can give you my number and see if maybe your rugby team can help develop it.
Oh, you know, we have a lot of very fit, healthy young people who would be very happy to work.
Outstanding.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Pamela Outerkirk, followed by Carol Fisher.
Oh, who should be, I could go. My name is Marin Nguyen, and
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I think I was next. I am here sort of standing in for Ian Camel of, Ian Johnson of NESCA. I'm a member of NESCA and an immediate resident of the North Campus, right across the street. And all of us enjoy the sports field. It is, as Mr. Bale said, a family-oriented thing, and we really do need that kind of activity. I think every, you know, every neighborhood needs that sort of thing. So, I'm not here to support rugby necessarily, but certainly am here to support the fact that it's an, it's an open field. Anybody can have a pickup game. There's not just organized teams and other things like that. It's two families next door, come over and have a picnic and have a game. You can do anything there. There's a guy who goes there every day and flies electronic airplanes. There's come out other people who train their dogs on that field, and it's just, it's just a family-oriented neighborhood, useful space, and we'd like to keep it exactly as it is. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counselors? All right, thank you very much. Pamela Outerkirk, followed by Carol Fisher.
I didn't come very prepared, so I apologize. My name's Pamela Outerkirk. Thank you for inviting me to speak today. I'm also speaking on 10.2. I am one of the committee members for the state softball team that uses the D Street fields. We've been using those fields for over 25 years now. I have been on the committee for six years, and I've been on the teams for 19 years. It's a recreational team. It's a state agency league, so we have about 15 different state agencies that do use the field. We use the fields in June through August, September, depending on the nice weather. Or, sorry, um, one, the reason we have to use is there are no facilities for the state agency league. We're just a recreational team. We're not a high-competitive team like they have at Wallace Park. So, we have looked for different areas to play. Like I said, we do have 14 teams that play, so it's kind of hard to get an area, so I don't know if the rugby team, if I can talk to you about getting, you know, because right now, we have one, one field that has a backstop, one field that doesn't. But we don't really care. We're kind of a family, we've been doing it for, you know, 30 years. We're kind of a family-oriented type of group. We, you know, different state agencies. We have some people who have three generations that play on this team. My daughter was two years old when I started. She's 21 now. It's, I just really enjoy the people I play with. So, I am, we have our players that range from six years all the way down to 12 years old. So, it's mostly family-based. The reason that we do enjoy this field is that we, we can't really afford the Wallace Marine Park. You know, some places I've heard are like $3,000 to play. We, we get our own porta potty to use. We pay for that. We pay for, sorry, we pay for the, sorry. I'm not very good at this. I'm really nervous. We give away awards every year. We have playoffs and stuff, so I just really encourage you guys to, you know, please don't take this field away from us. Because, you know, it's, it's not just state agency, it's family that plays out there. So, I just want to thank you, so.
Very nice. Thank you. Appreciate you coming down. Are there questions from counselors? Counselor Benjamin.
It sounds like this is a good-sized organization. If we were able to get this kind of carved out. It does have existing site now, but would it be possible that maybe those 14 teams could look at a way to actually improve the area?
Actually, every year, we go out and we cut our lines, we clean up the field, we put dirt at home plate, because I don't know if you guys have ever noticed that home plate always turns into a mud field. So, yeah, we've always had at least two weeks, three weeks before the season starts where we, you know, schedule times for people to go out and put dirt out there.
How about mending for backstops and stuff like that?
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, what was that?
Mending for backstops and whatnot?
Well, we, we just use the backstop that's there, so.
I mean, what I'm kind of getting at is if it ever becomes damaged, would, would that be something that would be in your, your team's kind of mission, is to try to maintain that?
Yeah, we, like, we, like the rugby teams, you know, we have young people that would love to, I mean, we'll work, we'll do whatever we need to be able to keep those fields.
Great, thank you.
So, we appreciate that.
Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I'm sure you didn't mean this, but we're, we can't take the field from you. We don't own it.
No, I'm sorry.
Have you, have you thought about approaching your employer, the state of Oregon, and have them retain the property and keep it as your ball field?
I personally don't know how to do that. So. I mean, I know that we had to sign an agreement every year to use the field because it was owned by DAS or something like that.
Which is the state.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Carol Fisher, followed by Ron Sturba.
I'm Carol Fisher. I'm here to support Pam. I also have played softball on the field for the past, this will be my 21st year, that I'll be playing this summer, and it is something that, that like Pam indicated, is very family-oriented, very, very much something in which you get agencies together so that not only do you get to know your coworkers better, but you get to know the other people in the other agencies. And so, it is something that is very appreciated. And the fact that we have been able to use it, State Hospital has let us use it each year, now that it is going to be, be sold, I don't know whether or not, you know, DAS has any intention to keep it. Obviously, they're looking to sell it, but it is something that is very valuable to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Thanks for coming down. Appreciate your testimony. Mr. Sturba, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff and counselors and guests. I live at 520th Street Northeast here in Salem, and I am for a proposed street life fee, but I'm not for the fee structure and how it's placed. What I'm opposed to is equal, the not equal distribution of this fee. We here in this city have what we call is a franchise. What is it? Exclusive rights to the event or that sale or branding of a product. The city of Salem, that's our franchise. That's what we have here to sell. In this case, I feel that the fee levied is not using the correct data on electricity since the LED lights installed in front of my home in October 2013 uses less than 50% of the electricity that it once did. Every apartment should be charged as a single family. I walk and drive the streets, so do the families of those apartment complexes, and they should be also charged the same equal amount as a property owner. I feel I'm being singled out. Apartment complex owners, some of them don't even live in Salem, but they're utilizing the city of Salem like a franchise. When I go to a pro football game in Seattle, I pay a fee to get in. When I go downtown to the waterfront in Portland, I pay a fee to get to the waterfront. When I go to the waterfront programs here in Salem, I pay an equal fee to get in to use. I want equal fees across the board now. How do you come up with equal fees? Well, I've come up with a, a set of schedules of fees, which I think might be equal and fair. Large corporations, $750 a year. Small corporations, $500 a year. Large businesses and complex owners, $500 a year. Small business owners are free, because the business owners are the ones that are making up our city. What is our franchise? We just can't be selling out our city to just anyone. So, I'm asking for fair and equal fees. Counselor McCoy, Counselor Anderson, Mr. Bennett, I have been fighting for equal pay, take that back, equal fees to be charged on homeowners. My hat's off to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Sturba? All right. Thank you for coming. Appreciate your testimony and your time. All right, was there anyone else that did want to comment on an item that's on the agenda that had not been able to sign up? All right, thank you so much, everyone. We'll close this session of the public comment, and we'll move to our consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.2C by Bennett, 3.3B by Anderson, 3.3D by Lewis.
I want to be sure I caught those. 3.2C by Bennett, 3.3D by Anderson.
3.3B.
Oh, B is in boy, by Anderson, and 3.3D by Counselor Lewis. Thank you. All right. Then did we have a second?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to approve the consent calendar with the, with those three polls. 3.2C, 3.3B, 3.3D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
On the hearing, there's no, the recorder doesn't need to be a statement. You can just turn it over to staff, and then expect deliberations.
Oh, all right. Okay, our city attorney has said we will, we do, we do not need to start with a staff report on this item, 4A, which is the council review of the planning administrator's decision for a growth preliminary declaration regarding a driveway.
Actually, actually, Mayor, we do have a staff presentation. We just don't need the city recorder to read the disclosure statement.
Oh, all right, thank you. I had misunderstood. We do have a staff presentation. Thank you. Here we are.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Aaron Panko with the Community Development Department. On February 9th, a public hearing was held to discuss an appeal of an application for site plan review, urban growth preliminary declaration, and a driveway approach permit for the development of a new headquarters for the Oregon State Police at the 3,500 block of Trelstead Avenue Southeast. The public hearing was closed, but the record was left open for additional written testimony. The applicant provided additional transportation findings that we received on February 23rd. A rebuttal was received from a neighboring property owner dated on March 2nd. These written comments are provided as attachments in this supplemental staff report, and a final written argument was received from the applicant earlier today, which is included in the additions. Staff has reviewed the additional testimony and did not see any new evidence which changed the recommendation to affirm this case. Tonight, council will begin deliberations. The 120-day state mandated decision date for this case is March 31st. this case is March 31st, 2015. Thank you.
We'll start with a motion. Okay, so we'll proceed to a motion. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor, I move the recommended action.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars for the recommended action. Is there discussion?
The recommended action, Madam Mayor, is to affirm the planning administrator approving and then this long batch of letters on this property at 3500 Block of Trelstead Avenue.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded, shall we call for the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Was it, no, you were aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. All right, we will move to special orders of business, excuse me, maybe there's a message here? All right, we're going to, we have three items that have been pulled, and I'd like to start with the item on 3.3B, which was pulled by Counselor Anderson. Counselor Anderson, would you like to make a motion for that item?
I move we adopt the recommended action.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Benars to adopt the recommended action. Is there discussion?
I have a brief, a bit of discussion. Neither in the written report or the online report could I find an attachment that was referred to.
Oh.
So I don't know if that's the fault of my computer or something else, but so I'm interested in what the attachment is, and I'm particularly interested in talking about what will be the citizen involvement, and it may be that the citizen, there can be no citizen involvement in the council committee because it's an executive decision and, you know, subject to executive sessions, and if that's the case, I'd ask the city attorney if that's the case, which is what I think it is.
First, I'd like to apologize for not having the attachment included, it was a draft that the committees reviewed several times, we should have had it in there, and we'll make sure and email that out to everyone. But the question is, the level of public involvement, the, essentially the idea is to allow public involvement after the initial candidates have been screened to preserve their confidentiality, to allow the committee, if one is selected by the council, to review the applications initially and allow council to select a list of finalists, and then once the interview process has started and council has an opportunity to conduct interviews to allow the public to meet the candidates.
So I presume then that that is legally, I would guess it is a legally appropriate way to do it. We cannot have citizen involvement up until that point.
Well, let me turn to our city manager, and then I believe that our human resources director has something to say.
Well, what I wanted to say is typically there isn't public involvement until the council has narrowed it down to the top one or two applicants, because people don't necessarily want to publicly announce that they're seeking another position.
No, I agree with that procedure.
But then I think Mina can talk about the rest of it.
In order to get the highest quality.
Oh, excuse me, could you just introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. I'm Mina Hansen, I'm the HR Director for the City of Salem. We're very concerned about ensuring that we get the highest quality candidates for you to consider, and one of the elements of that is ensuring the confidentiality during those initial stages. It's highly risky for candidates that are currently employed to have the public know they're looking for another job, particularly if they're currently a city manager somewhere. So we would keep that process close to the public until you made a decision on maybe that one or two candidates, and we left a lot of room in the process for you to decide how that public interaction occurs, whether that be in a reception, a dialogue like this, and those are some decisions that we can make as we move through the process, but there certainly is ample opportunity for that public forum.
Yeah, and I will say as chair of that subcommittee, that staff have been particularly helpful, because for most of us in this, on this council, this is a new process, and so we appreciate very much what our new human resources director, Mina Hansen, has been able to do, but it truly is going to be the decision of the council as to what types of community opportunities there will be, and there definitely will be some opportunity for some council and community opportunity, and community for the community to have a chance to meet the finalist or couple finalists. How that's going to be structured, this council will decide, we don't know that today.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
And there is more information in that handout, I'm glad that we'll get that out to council, I thought that was going to be in here.
Thank you very much, that's entirely appropriate, and I agree with that whole, I just wanted to make sure, since there wasn't an attachment, I thought there might be more than that. I do have one other question, it sounds like, or seems like, from the report that there will be another council committee, or is the subcommittee that you are chairing now the council committee referred to in the discussion?
There's only one council committee.
Okay.
But everything that the council committee does will be brought to the full council.
Oh, well, yeah, I understand that, I just wanted to make sure that the committee that's referred to is the committee that is already in place.
Right.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That's right.
Madam Mayor, if I could just make a point of order, since the draft procedure wasn't attached, I would ask you to withdraw your motion, and we'll bring it back to you on the 23rd for adoption, so you can actually see the draft procedure.
I'm perfectly happy unless it's, unless it's a procedural matter you think I need to do, I'm happy with the explanation and I'm happy with the procedure as described here, so I don't feel any need to unless you think it's a legal matter.
Actually, you do, because.
I would feel better.
Okay, okay, so I withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right, thank you, and I appreciate that, city attorney, I do appreciate that, because the committee has worked hard on this draft for a couple of meetings, and I really want to always be certain that the full council knows every step we're taking and feels confident of every step. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm on that subcommittee, which must be why I've read this memo. Because my computer opened something up and I read it, but one thing I noticed missing from, that was during our discussion, and I want to just check in on it, was having the mayor or some representation from the council visit the community where the final candidate or candidates reside. I have found that to be really valuable, to have an opportunity to kind of go on the ground and talk to some people, and I wondered, did I just miss that, or was that just in the version I saw that it wasn't there?
You know, that's one element that was not reached to consensus in the subcommittee, whether we would be doing that, I remember we had several conversations about it, but I don't know that we came to a final agreement on that, and we're going to have further conversations with the executive recruiting firm that we had retained about whether that was something that was, that they should do, or they should go with a council member to do, in order to ensure that we haven't overstepped some boundaries with regard to privacy and protecting that individual's.
Well, my recollection was that we discussed this very clearly, and that it was, I certainly left the meeting with the understanding that it would be one of the, one of several things that we will be doing in our checking. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, Counselor Benars, did you have a question or comment?
Well, a statement, I thought I was going to be able to clear up Counselor Anderson's comment on earlier, for us who are not on the committee and have not seen anything other than this document, I bring to your attention, it does talk about, see, the recommended procedure, attachment one, which we were talking about, but then the next paragraph below talks about the procedure is five stages as, and then it goes on, as described in the following, so for us who have not read it, it actually was there, so there apparently is more to this, I look forward to reading it.
Yeah, okay, good.
You didn't get attachment one either.
Well, no, no, not the attachment that we're supposed to get.
Yeah, yeah, I saw this one, I just didn't see the attachment.
Okay, so we will get that out. All right. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
There is none. Yeah, I withdrew it.
Oh, we haven't, oh, you're, that's right, thank you so much, making my job even easier, all right, and thank you very much.
That's what I'm here for.
Oh, yeah, good. All right, then we're going to move to the next item that was pulled, and it was pulled by Counselor Lewis, and it is item 3.3D, and Counselor Lewis, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I do. I move to deny the petition to vacate First Street and Lincoln Avenue Northwest.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Bennett to deny the petition request for the vacation of a portion of First Street. Is there discussion?
Yes, if I could, I, I do this for, for one main reason, and that is that this site, at least to me, as somebody who drives over the bridge every day and drives into West Salem, is under numerous studies, and I think is crucial, it needs to be identified before there is anything happening to it. The West Salem Business Association, the Western Urban Renewal Area is looking at it, you know, we may have identified where the next bridge over the Willamette River is going to be, at least some have settled on it, but where that is going to interface with Highway 22 and how that's going to interface with the connection to that highway and the bridge coming into West Salem is not for sure. There's all kinds of studies going in, and it's just, it's, in my opinion, imperative to get that figured out before we start putting a lot of time, money, and energy into developing that specific area of West Salem, and so I just think those issues need to be resolved first before we move forward.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there further discussion? All right, we'll call for the question, and it was moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Benars.
No.
No, by Counselor Bennett, thank you, seconded by Counselor Bennett, they both are West Salem councilors, we know that.
If I can just add another point of order, because of the way the vacation statutes work in Oregon, this will be your motion, what will happen next, if the motion is approved, is that we will send notice to the applicant, and you will come back and adopt a final written order at a subsequent meeting.
All right, but we do vote on this motion now.
Yes.
All right, and the motion is to deny the petition. All those, all those in favor of the motion to deny the petition signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay.
Nay.
All right, let's have the nays raise your hands so we can record the no votes. The nays are Counselor McCoy, Counselor Benjamin, and Counselor Benars. Two, three, four, so the motion passes. All right, thank you, and we have a third item, and that is item 3.2C, and that was pulled by Counselor Bennett.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to have a couple-minute break.
Okay, yeah.
Before we get started on this one.
All right, we're going to do that, we'll have a little stretch, and come back shortly, thank you. We left off at, we're going to address an item that was moved to an special section, and it's item 3.2C, it was pulled by Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Bennett, do you have a?
Motion.
Motion, I'd like to note that Counselor Diana Dickey is with us, welcome, glad you're here, safe and sound, good. Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the council adopt Resolution 2015-13, setting fees and charges for the operation, maintenance, upgrade, and expansion of the city's streetlight system effective July 1, 2015.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars. Is there discussion? Who, Counselor Bennett, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we had extensive discussion of this at our last meeting, I believe this is now ready to be moved forward. It is, I think, as we, as I've talked with other councilors over time and thought about this quite a bit, this will be, I think, an issue we'll revisit over time and talk about various aspects of it. It's not, this is not set in stone forever, it gives us a chance, I think, though, to get this program started, to look at how it's working, to talk with our constituents about it, think very carefully about changes that may add to its fairness, may improve its capabilities for meeting the needs of both our streetlights and our street system. I think this is something we'll talk about over time and again, so.
Great. All right, thank you.
I hope you all vote yes.
All right, and I saw Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor McCoy.
Thank you. I raised this issue with President Nanki and then instead Acting President Bennett, as well as the mayor and city manager, because I asked for it to be pulled, but I didn't want to pull it myself, because if I pull it, I have to make a motion, and I would be opposing the motion, so Counselor Bennett was generous enough to say that he would pull it, pretty much on my behalf, and I am going to vote against it on the fairness issue as we discussed the last time. I agree with the theory of it, I just think its application in this instance is not fair for the reasons we discussed last council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I voted for this last time, and really had to think about it, I'm going to vote for it again, but I will say I'm really troubled, you know, I heard discussions, well, it's not perfect, but let's pass it, I'm troubled by that, I think there's an inequity in the way the people are asking to fund this, I have a real problem with having, asking people with no streetlights to pay a streetlight fee, I understand the logic, but you still have 2,500 streetlights out there that are missing, and we're asking people to pay for them. I just don't, I have major problems with it, I understand the reason for the money, I'll support this issue, but I will be bringing this back up at some point in the not-so, in the very near future, saying, I want to revisit this, look at it, and we need to think about what we're doing, take some time and make this right, because this is, the goal is right, I think the method is a little, not quite fully baked.
Okay, thank you. Other comments by councilors, Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor, I may have mentioned this last time, but I'm very interested in a report fairly soon after this fee goes into effect, to just see how the program's going, where the streetlights are going, what, you know, if other funds have been freed up, what other maintenance that we have deferred for years and years and years have been able to do, so that would be really helpful along with, you know, if there are other questions, but that would be great to know, you know, in the short term, what's the effectiveness.
All right, thank you, other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor, it was moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, and the nay votes are, oh, the nay vote is Counselor Anderson, thank you very much. All right, that concludes those items that were moved on to the section Special Orders of Business. We don't have any, we have no unfinished business. There are several items in the council agenda this evening that are information reports, and I would like to speak to one of those, and that is 7F, the Cherry Blossom Days, and I'm very excited about this, because it's something that used to be part of this city's heritage and practice, and it kind of went away for some reason, I don't know for sure why, but there is a group that has come back together around the State Capitol Foundation, and then other volunteers, like Ross Swartz and Druber, who's right here with us this evening, thank you for coming down and helping with this, just to be here. But the Cherry Blossom Day at the Capitol is Saturday, March 28th, and I have a poster and a whole list of events going on, and it's. going on, and it's particularly, I think, important for our city to play a role, and to play a financial role in this, in that it really highlights our relationship with Japan and with our sister city, Cowgoi City in Japan, and it also highlights our relationship to the state of Oregon, and I think that's always healthy opportunity for us to collaborate. And you know, my song is that we are the collaboration capital, and this event is actually a collaboration of a whole bunch of businesses and organizations, and I draw your attention to the, the, those that are listed on the poster. So Saturday, March 28, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., it's free, it's open to the public. There is a photography contest, so I encourage people out in the community who are photographers, and you don't have to be a professional photographer, amateur photographers are keenly wanted to come as entrance for the Cherry Blossom Photography Contest. And then also, there will be activity tables for children. The Japanese Cultural Society is performing some dances and displays. There'll be a kimono fashion show, the tea ceremony. State Parks will be giving tours of the Capitol, which is a state park, and that should be fun and interesting, because it has a lot of heritage. And there'll be tastings by the Oregon cherry growers, Ben &amp; Jerry's Cherry Ice Cream, which is really good, and Willamette Pie Company with cherry pies. So it should be a lot of fun, there'll be a lot of music and activity. And I want to particularly thank Ross Swartzendruber for all of his volunteer time on this project, and for the excitement that he's bringing to a lot of the activities that are going to be down in front of the Capitol on the Mall, as well as the events that are going on inside the building. So that is Cherry Blossom Day, and I'm very, very pleased that there will be some funding from the city, and you'll see that in your information report titled 7F. And that money comes from, I'm going to check with the city manager, from our top funds?
That's correct.
Is that right? Okay, excellent. Is there any other discussion or questions about information reports? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I'm just commenting briefly on, well, I'll comment also on 7F, and I'm, I'm pleased that I'm going to be substituting for the mayor and handing out the awards
for the-
Yes, you are, thank you.
For the photo contest.
Thank you.
I hope somebody else is doing the judging, but I'll be happy to hand out the awards.
Yeah, I'll go do that.
I don't mind judging things that I know something about. I want to comment on 76. Thank you for the staff report. This, the North Campus is in my ward, that's the far fringes of my ward, but it is in my ward, and it's, I've been involved in a lot of discussion about what's going to happen there and what could happen, and it's a, it's a very fluid situation, and I appreciate the staff report, and I think it's imperative on us in the city to keep on top of this issue, both in the Legislative Subcommittee and in the other things. You know, we had something tonight about the park, potential for the park there, and all of these things are a huge, big Rubik's Cube, and, and the only way we're going to have any voice in this is to make sure that we do have a voice in it, and the only way we do that is to keep in contact with the legislative leaders and follow this quite closely. So I urge that we all do this.
Great, and maybe, do you want to make some comments?
Well, yes, I can. We have been very interested. It's an important area of the community, although we don't own it. What the state does or doesn't do with it is of critical importance to the neighborhood and to our community. So we've been very involved with the Department of Administrative Services and have had several conversations with our legislative leadership about it, and will continue to do that. The next step, I believe, is whether the legislature funds the mitigation, and there's a proposal to do that now. That will, decision will be known by the end of the legislative session, which will likely end in June, and then there will be, after the mitigation, a process that I anticipate the state will go through related to the development and the potential uses for this site. So as anxious as everyone is to have a decision right now, it's going to take probably until fall before we have other good information about what the timing is and what the process is after that point.
Great, thank you. Any other comments about information reports? All right, we'll proceed to ordinances. 8.1 is a, let's see, we don't have a first reading, we have a second reading, 8.2A. With the recorder, please introduce that and take the roll call.
Ordinance Bill Number 515, relating to streetlights, creating a new Chapter 70A and amending Salem Revised Code Section 70.220, 70.245, 70.250, 70.280, and 70.300. Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
No.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Benjamin?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Nay.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
All right, and will the nays please raise your hand? Just Counselor Bennett, Counselor Anderson, and it passes.
Benars.
I'm sorry.
One of the beat guys.
What did I say?
No, no.
Oh, I'm so sorry. All right, okay, correct that. Now, we move on to public testimony. I believe that we do have some people who've signed up this evening to comment on items other than agenda items. Marvin San, Sanus, am I saying that correct? Lee, followed by Jane Downing. I don't think Jane's still here.
She left.
I think she left, okay.
On Marvin Sanus, I live at 6415th Street Northeast, and this is a painful subject for all of us. Only one in seven Americans has seen this building come down. No, only one, less than one in seven Americans are aware that a third tower came down on 9/11, and less than that have seen it. Okay, I'm, I'm afraid for our democratic process. We don't talk about this. This was a seminal event in our democracy. We've been at war in a third-world country for 14 years, and some very terrible things are happening in our society. We have 22 suicides in the military every day. Heroin addiction is rampant in Salem. In 2001, a gram of heroin at North Salem High School cost $400. Today, at North Salem High School, a gram of heroin costs $100. We don't talk about this stuff. This stuff goes on under the surface. These are our children, for some of us, these are our grandchildren. We have to talk about this. Our media doesn't talk about it, but we do have, democracy is happening right here, right now. We have to talk about these things among ourselves. So that's why I came here. I've been, I grew up in Mount Angel, and I've been in business in Salem for 50 years, and I want to be certain that my city counselors and Madam Mayor have seen this, this video. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate your coming down. Are there questions from any counselors? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now turn to new business. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess Jane Downing did leave. I haven't seen her in the audience. Yes?
Mayor, she did leave, but she left these brochures and wanted to thank council for your support for this facility.
Oh, fine, oh, okay, good. Thank you. Yes, Center for Hope and Safety. If you haven't had a chance to visit there, please go by and, and see. It's really remarkable what they're doing there. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to speak on a non-agenda item, if you would please.
We can add your name to the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counselors, and city staff. I'm going to direct this to our counselor, Mrs. Dickey here. I have noticed something that we could utilize here at the Oregon State Fairgrounds, and that is, we have a possibility of putting a train station next to, or a platform, to the Oregon State Fairgrounds. The railroad spur is there, there's trees there, land, and it's available. And we could bring in people to the Oregon State Fair from Portland, from Eugene, from central Oregon, and just think of riding Amtrak to the Oregon State Fair, coming from eastern Oregon, staying here in Salem at one of our hotels, and getting back on or going a second day to the fair, and leaving from the platform at the Oregon State Fairgrounds. Again, the platform would only be utilized during the time of the fair, and I think that's something that we have a gold standard for, but it's covered up. And I'm just bringing it to the table here, and hope that our state legislatures, through our city staff, will take a look at the issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Sturba? Yes, Counselor Dickey?
I just want to say thanks for coming down and throwing that idea out there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we'll move to new business, and there are two items on here that are mayor's items. The first one is the City Council Finance Subcommittee Assignments. I have to look this up, be sure I don't misspeak myself. So we had made an error, but this is to correct the city council appointments list for city council committees and subcommittees, as attached on your, in your report, in your agenda. And the attached roster represents the council appointments through 2016. So please, if there are any further questions, or maybe if we've made any other errors, let me know, please, so that you see the finance committee is comprised of Counselor Benars, chaired by Counselor Nanki, and then also Counselor Bennett, McCoyd, and Counselor Dickey as an alternate. Okay, I think that that corrects what we had mistakenly had on the first assignments list that went out. So there we are. And do I need to make a motion for that?
No.
No, it's just an announcement, okay. And my second item is on the Agenda 10B, and it is a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution, as attached in the agenda, in support of reopening the Willamette Falls locks. So I do make that motion, and if I can get a second, thank you very much. It's seconded by Counselor Benars. I will tell you a little bit about the background on this. And the reason that I'm bringing this forward is because I believe very strongly that tourism and recreational tourism can be tremendous economic engines in our community and in the mid-Willamette Valley. We have an opportunity to simply to support, along with other cities along the Willamette River, the repair and reopening of the locks. And the efforts that will also go along with that mean a revitalization of the riverfront along the area in Oregon City near where the locks are. I've seen a lot of the diagrams. It's encouraging. I think anytime we're, we're paying homage to our history and our heritage, and making it come to life for everyday residents and for visitors, I think it's something we should heartily support. This will have no financial burden on the city of Salem or on any of our businesses, but I think it will provide potential opportunity for boating all the way from Salem, you know, up to Portland and beyond by going, being able to go through the locks, and for people from up in the Portland area to come down to Salem. So I move, and it's been seconded by Counselor Benars. Is there any further discussion, any questions? Counselor Anderson?
I, I have, I guess, a comment and then a question. I, I completely agree that tourism on the river is a fantastic thing, as one who, along with a certain person's husband, has canoed from Eugene to Salem and then on down to Oregon Cities, as far as I went. I think this is crucial, and it's very important. My question, I guess, is, this clearly is broader than we read in the paper about the issue about the steamboat here, that it is, is going to have to do something to get inspected, and the only way it can get inspected are, and the best way is to go down through the falls. And I, I'm certain that the, the intent of this motion is much more broadly based than just helping out that one particular economic partner of ours.
Actually, I'm not aware of what his schedule or needs are, so I'm not, I don't want to be misinterpreted as being a proponent of doing this to enable him to do that, because I'm not sure how-
Well, good, good, good.
-he does get that inspection done.
Yeah, well, there-
At the Coast Guard. I just know he is inspected by the-
Yeah, it was in the paper, and there's a big brouhaha about, the only way he can do it is to haul it out, and he can't haul it out up here without a lot and lot of expenses, but there are dry docks below the locks that he can get to and use.
I see, okay.
So if this is a, a side benefit of that, that's great. The other thing I would ask is, I agree that in your background here, there's a concern about using the locks as an alternative form of transportation on the invent, in the event of, you know, a natural disaster, basically an earthquake. And I appreciate that and agree with that, but I didn't see that it was in the, in one of the whereas's in the draft revol, resolution. So-
Okay.
I'd ask if that's possible to, what we, comes back, would have another paragraph about that particular issue, about how the reopening of the Willamette Falls might be very helpful in the case of a natural disaster. I think that's another selling point for that resolution.
Great, thank you. Okay, all right. So there's a motion on the floor. I've moved, and Counselor Benars seconded the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And we have a counselor's item, 10.2A, and that is, wait a moment, I am, yes, 10.2A. Counselor Benars, do you have a motion?
(laughing)
I'm so sorry, I don't know why I'm doing that. Counselor Bennett, is Counselor Bennett-
Can we reconsider that last vote? I want to go back.
(laughing)
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to direct staff to explore and report back to the city council concerning the possibility of acquiring a portion of the state-owned North Campus at 23rd and D Streets for use as a city park.
Second.
It's a move by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Anderson to move that, that we explore the acquisition of a portion of that property. And Counselor Bennett, do you want to speak to your motion?
Just very briefly, Madam Mayor, as a former scout, I've, I really have internalized the "be prepared" slogan, and I think that's what we'd be doing, is just make sure we're ready if the opportunity arises. As the manager pointed out, we're on a reasonably slow timeline here, because we're reliant on the legislature, and then a substantial additional process through the Department of Administrative Services. But I think it's a chance for city staff to get us ready, to take a look at what needs to be done in order to, what would that look like? What are, are there impediments? I know that there is a certain amount of concern relative to the park's master plan. I mean, it's, it's something that could take a tremendous amount of time for us to just work through our own processes, and I'd like to have staff kind of come back and tell us what that looks like, so that if this does become available, we could actually move on it, and particularly if it's available at a really advantageous price.
Okay, Counselor Benars?
Although I was not given the, because I was given the chance to second it. I've had some little reservation on this. I wholly support parks, there's no to waste about it. I just wanted to clarify a couple things. First off, how much effort, Counselor Bennett, do you intend to go into this? I mean, what are you looking for staff to come back to us with?
With a report.
With a report.
Yeah, and I think that staff and, and the management know what level of work. I'm, I'm not expecting spreadsheets and a deep, a deep dive into this, but I think that making contact with DAS, looking at- But I think that making contact with DAS, looking at the, at the master plan, looking at the kinds of parks and deficits we may have, ball fields or, you know, that kind of thing. But nothing's, not a wildly spectacular deep dive into this particular piece. But I also think it's good that we keep track of this, keep in touch with our legislative delegation as well as DAS on this property. This is very important property in this city. And we need to, I think we need to keep track of it. This is a recommendation from our Parks Board. It's not, I didn't think it was, it didn't say go buy it, you know?
Right. I just asked the question because it actually is in the master plan, and I couldn't find it. The master plan's quite, I'm talking about the city's parks master plan. I couldn't find it. So this is one of the things I would look for in the staff report. Where there was actually a recommendation that that neighborhood didn't need the parkland. I know that they're accustomed to it. I acknowledge that a lot of people use that land. We've, I've used, my family's used it as well. I'm just cautioned in the sense that the master plan said, hey, we don't really need park space in that area of Salem. We already have plenty. But I'd like to see that in the report, you know? The other thing is, I just want to make sure that we are, I really think that the property, we're almost put in the cart before the horse, no egg or chicken this time, in the sense that really needs, the area needs to be master planned, that whole lock, stock, and barrel, there's so much real estate there, to take a five to 20 acre area without thinking through the master plan.
My motion does not mention 20 acres.
Okay. The idea, what I'm hearing is that you want mostly what I want. I just want to make sure that it's in my mind as we move forward. We have some ideas of what is there, could be done, and that we're keeping our legislative committee in tune with that whole thing as we talk to our legislature.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor McCoyd?
I'm going back to your theme, and I'm starting to wonder, why do we keep developing parks when we can't maintain the ones we have? Real bluntly. I mean, it's great, everybody loves them, you love them in your neighborhood, but at some point, we can't afford to maintain them, then we ought to probably consider not developing them until we know we can take care of them, or at least take care of the stock that we have now, which we're struggling with. So I'm fine with looking at a study, but I'm wondering why we consider, continue to open parks that we can't take care of.
Counselor Benjamin?
I was under the impression that area's kind of park light. Maybe I'm wrong, but a staff report would help me focus a little bit more on that. Understanding that a lot of people already use it, and we have so far two large groups that are very interested and use it very often. And some of the questions I ask them, would they be willing to maintain it in that regard? If they can also come to the table once we determine, can we get that for little or nothing? And then let's just kind of throw out some boundaries, and then we get them to the table and say, okay, here's some park, would you like to get a piece of it and maintain it? I think that would be helpful in regards to the Honorable Gentleman McCoyd, McCoyd. But...
I don't know. He's two McCoys.
But, you know, it's, that seems like that's, that's some, that area needs more park action. I know that the Neighborhood Association, NESC, there wanted some sort of park, kind of as part of their 10 or nine important items, that I thought was just fair to be able to say yes on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, and then I have a comment to make.
I'll be voting in favor of this, and I think something also ought to be said just for the benefit of having open space. And even if we have open space that ends up being an undeveloped park, that's what we've got there now, open space that is a pretty much undeveloped park and it's used. So I think just the concept of having open space in the city as designated as parkland, even though they're not at this time able to be developed, I think that's a, that's a good idea.
My comments are on, I remember back to being at some of the Neighborhood Association meetings early on, when that property was designated as 44 acres of surplus property that would be eventually sold by the state of Oregon. And I remember information from staff at that time in response to Neighborhood Association questions about, couldn't it be a park, that there were actually parks adjacent to that area. And I wondered if staff, perhaps Director Peter Fernandez could talk about what is available, what's nearby, what has been done so that the people in that neighborhood do have access to parks?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I mean, the most significant property obviously is the Gear Park property that, you know, Senator Courtney got the Department of Corrections to donate to us. That park is south of Center Street. As part of the state hospital improvement, the state hospital built a sidewalk along the west side of Illinois from Center Street to the park entrance to provide better access, better pedestrian access into that park, as well as the street connection. So I think that's one of the reasons why the master plan does not call for that property to be parkland. But if Counselor Bennett's motion passes tonight, we will put all that in the staff report and speak to what is in the master plan, what are the properties around it, and what are the possibilities for this property in the future.
Okay. Let's see. Who had their hand up? Was it Counselor Benars? Did you have your hand up? Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to, in that report, I hope to see something in reference to the state mental hospital that's on the south side of Center Street, has considerable amount of land that is park-like setting where you could walk your dog. It's not set up for sports fields like what we were hearing testimony on, which I think this community is in dire needs of. Sports fields, sports fields meaning that they've been drained, they're set up for winter or mostly wet activities as well as dry, but include that property. I want to make sure the property on the, on the west side of the hospital is included in that, okay, is this a park? Is it not accessible to the people in our communities, only for the patients that are there? It has tennis courts, I know, and I don't know much more about it. I really have not been into it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that. It is, it is state property, it is open to the public, it's open for the enjoyment of the public and for passive recreation, but we'll certainly speak to that as well.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion before us? The motion by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars? I'm sorry, Counselor Anderson, I am sorry. I'm...
That's my standup.
All right. I am so trained and used to saying that. It is true.
You won't hear very many seconds from me, Mayor, but on this one, I'm...
All right. Here we are. And the motion is to direct staff to explore the potential acquisition of a portion of the state-owned North Campus for a city park. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right. With that, I see no other information. Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Yes, I apologize for what's probably going to be a procedural foupah, but I do have one issue I'd like to bring up, and if I could do it in the form of a motion, I will. But I'll put it this way, in the streets and bridges bond measure, there was money set aside and sitting there for purchase of property along Marine Drive. And to help finish that project, I would like to move that that, that purchase of property along Marine Drive at least have a report of if that could, that purchase could start for the purchase of the property along Marine Drive.
Is this a motion or it's simply a question?
No, it's a motion if it could be, but...
All right. The motion, then is there a second to your motion? All right. So it's moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Benars. And discussion?
Yeah, real quick, as somebody who stood out on the rainy street corners in 2008, getting people to agree for that bond measure, I'd like to get it finished up as quickly as possible, that's one thing. Marine Drive is something that I've heard a rumor of ever since I've been in Salem for 15 years. I'd like to see it come to fruition. And more importantly, Marine Drive, although it's, it can't be finished as a street, it certainly could be used as a pedestrian and a bike way to alleviate those folks off of Wallace Boulevard to at least help that aspect. So if it's possible to start that process and at least use Marine Drive for that today, I think that makes sense. Whether that can be done or not, I don't know.
Our city attorney has information for us.
So as the parliamentarian, there's a council rule that says that council motions have to be brought in writing to the city, to the city management prior to the council meeting. Or the council can't consider that motion at tonight's meeting unless you were to vote otherwise. So it's up to the discretion of the council, but you could bring that back in a written form, and then you can consider it at the next meeting.
Okay.
And if I, could I, I won't be present at the next meeting, but we, if somebody else wants to bring it back.
Okay. I see Counselor Bennett's hand up, and then Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, thank you. I just suggest hold off maybe on this motion until you're going to be here, but give yourself time to write it out, to give, to have staff help you with a longer rationale, a longer statement of what the situation is. I think that, and then it keeps us in line with this rule, which is to try to stop us from just dropping motions on each other. That's all it is, is we'd be breaking that, and I think once you start down that road, you'd have motion after motion. So if you wouldn't mind, it comes in, I think, on Wednesday or Wednesdays before the next meeting. And I'm sure Mr. Fernandez could work with you on getting the bullet points that really tell exactly what you're saying, because it's a really good idea.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much. As an attorney, I'm very interested in process, and I would agree with the city attorney, although substantively, I support the motion by Counselor Lewis, and he and I have had some discussions about that and been on the site there. And this is also an issue that I raised in the work session on the West Salem Plan about, you know, we've got the money allocated, you know, why can't we look at that? So I would be very interested in bringing this up again and would love to see a preliminary staff report. And if Counselor Lewis isn't able to make a written motion by Wednesday, I might be able to. So let's talk after the meeting.
Okay. All right. So if there's no further business to come before this council, we are adjourned.